Call this meeting of the Huron School Board to order. I'll ask the business manager to note the roll call and ask everybody to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Snow.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. I just have one addition under reports. Ten, we'll add an E for report from board member Garrett Bishop on the Associated School Board's conference last week. I'd move adoption.
Second.
The motion is second to adopt the agenda with that amendment. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. That motion carries. Next, oh, for dates to remember, we have parent teacher comp day on December 23rd. There's no school that day. Christmas break is December 26th through the 30th, no school. January 1st, of course, Happy New Year. January 2nd is a meeting of the Calendar Committee at 3:45 PM here at the Instructional Planning Center in the arena. Public testimony will be welcome at 3:45 on that day, and I know we'll hear more about that later in the superintendent's report. January 9th is the regular Board of Education meeting at 5:30 PM here in the arena. January 11th is early release. January 16th, Martin Luther King Day, no school. January 21st is Credit Recovery Day. January 23rd is the board meeting at 5:30. And January 30th is the high school registration open house from 5:30 to 8:45. That is it for dates to remember. Next is community input for items not on the agenda. Is there anybody present to give input on an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on then to the consent agenda. We have, yeah, yeah, well, I skipped over seven because there's nothing there, in case anybody following along at home. Eight, consent agenda, approval and/or correction of minutes of previous meetings, consideration and approval of bills, approval and/or correction of the financial report, board approval of new hires. We have three, four graduation coaches, June Wheeler, Linda Thielen, Nancy Kempf, and Mackenzie Culver. Two halftime oral interprisers, Kristi Winiger and Kira Carabantes. Tyler Valeski as a substitute teacher. Carla Pisick as a TAP classroom leader. And Jennifer Stanfield and Myra Chavez as substitute teachers. There are no contracts for board approval. We have five resignations for board approval. We have Toni Grace, a study hall supervisor at the high school. We have Dawn Coughlin, the librarian, she's a librarian, a media specialist at the high school. She's served the district for 31 years and will be retiring at the end of this school year. We also have a resignation from Becky DeBoer, a sped para educator at Buchanan. Jenny Mallard, a TAP classroom leader. And Jenny Halogen, a sped para at Buchanan. There's a permission to bid, permission to advertise for bids to pave the parking lots at Tiger Stadium. Project will be split into two bids. One bid will be for gravel, curb, and gutter, concrete and fence. The second bid will be for asphalt paving. The sidewalk and fence around the north side of the track will be bid as an alternate. And then we have a request to open the HMS Counseling Club account. Heather Seath, or Cee, sorry, Huron Middle School counselor is seeking permission to create an activity account for the counseling office at the middle school. Information on that is attached. That is it for the consent agenda. It can be approved with one motion, or a member can ask a question or remove something and put it on the agenda.
I'd move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. That motion carries. We'll now turn it over to the superintendent to celebrate successes in the district.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. First, I'll begin with the congratulations that have been submitted to our office. Congratulations to first team All-State linebacker, senior Sam Kretschmer. And first team All-State defensive back, senior Highland Heinz. An honorable mention, All-State receiver, senior Ty Evers. Congratulations to assistant principal at the high school, Jolene and her husband Grant Konetsky, on the birth of their son Charles Douglas, born November 18th. Congratulations to John and Hannah Scoughton. John is adaptive PE boost up at Buchanan K-1 Center, on the birth of their son Theo Jack. Congratulations to Amy Pho, who's an ESL para educator and interpreter, who'll be graduating from Northern State University on Saturday, December 10th, who graduated, excuse me, with an Associate of Arts degree in general studies. Congratulations to the All-State cheer winners, Sidney Schillingstad, senior, Deanna Little, a junior, and Quincy Gaylor, a junior. Congratulations to Jalen Kerner, eighth grade for the Huron Middle School, for doing an awesome job reporting the weather on KSFY News. Congratulations to first team All-State volleyball, senior Carissa Schroder. And second team All-State volleyball, junior Jada Schillingstad. Thank yous go out this month to Jen Bragg and all of the volunteers and staff at Buchanan who helped with the Krispy Kreme fundraiser. Thank you to Ms. Willamson, Ms. King, Mr. Buttonhagen, and Ms. Georgia Langbeam, who's a Client Services Officer at the Huron Area Chapter for Independence for their organization and planning, which allowed the partnership for the Center for Independence and Lead for Life program with the Huron Middle School sixth graders to happen. The Center for Independence thanks the sixth graders for partnering with them and investing in the lives of people with disabilities and kids. This changes our community and makes for a better world. And congratulations to Candy Hedinger-Bryley, State Fair Marketing and Events Coordinator, excuse me, thank you to Candy Hedinger-Bryley from the State Fair Marketing and Events Coordinator for bringing Ms. South Dakota State Fair Carly Goodheart to the Buchanan K-1 Center. Carly read to the kindergarten students and visited with the first graders about heart health. Thank you, Carly, for taking the time to visit the Buchanan K-1 Center. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We'll now turn to reports from the board, or reports to the board. Our first is the Classified Employee of the Month, which will be presented by Mr. Roderick and Mr. Saville.
Ms. Roderick.
It gives Mr. Saville and myself great privilege to honor Darla Helpcat tonight as the December Administrative Assistant for the School District from the Huron Arena Office and Buildings and Grounds. As you see in the board packet, there are a lot of comments that have been submitted on Darla's behalf, and I'd like to read one, just so the audience can hear what somebody had to say about Darla. Darla is amazing. Working with her at local and state events is always a pleasure. She is positive and takes on every task with a smile. Just knowing that she will be there for the extra knowledge and support makes large events less stressful, at least for us. Such a deserving award for such an awesome lady. As far as Rex and I go, I don't think words can do justice for our appreciation and our feelings for Darla and what she does for our office. Every day, we are extremely grateful for her dedication and her service to the school district, but more importantly, for what she does for us professionally and personally. The amount of responsibility that falls on her desk is mind-boggling, and it's something that I certainly can't go through and try to explain because I'll leave too many things out. She is a valuable piece to the school district and extremely valuable to our office, and with that, I am very grateful and appreciative for all the things that she does for us.
Actually, I can't say it better.
Okay, congratulations, Darla.
Can we get opposed, opposed picture so we can get?
Our next item is a good news report from the Washington 4-5 Center on Wellness at Washington. This will be presented by Principal Beth Foss and Rita Basler.
Yes. Okay. Okay, we are from the Washington 4-5 Center, and we are proud to present Wellness at Washington. And we thought that was quite catchy because WW. With me today, I have one of our nurses, Rita Basler, and we have five fourth grade scholars. We have Jonathan, also known as Bubba. With us, we have Aurora. We have Tanner. We have Hannah. And we have Jaslyn. And they are from Mrs. Zell's fourth grade class.
I want to check with the TV crew. Is it best that way, or is it best to have them turn? Can you, is it, I just want to make sure it's the front, whether we switch them or switch cameras.
This way in front is what she told me.
Okay.
And you guys can just have a seat.
There you go.
I just want to make sure that moms and dads and grandpas and grandmas can see.
Face the flag. So, sit and face the flag.
So, come back this way. And, there we go. And you guys will be facing the flag.
There we go. I know grandparents will appreciate that.
Right. And we're not, we're not ready yet to do our CPR, so just sit perfectly. Okay, great.
Thanks, Mrs. Foss.
Okay. With me again is Mrs. Zell, and we have our help from our five scholars. I am really excited about this presentation, and if it wasn't for our nurses and our staff, Wellness at Washington would not be. We started with information from healthier generations, and Ms. Basler can take it from there.
So, about five years ago, we did start with healthier generation as a district, and then our schools each became healthier generation participants. And we developed school wellness teams. And so, our Washington wellness team began, like all the others did, in developing an assessment of our schools to find out how healthy it was. With that assessment came a lot of knowledge. We found out in different areas, such as school health and safety, health education, physical education. We assessed the nutrition services, health promotion for staff and family and community. It takes a team to do all of those assessments, and so, that would be our Washington staff participates, the nurse, the principal, the PE teachers, and then, of course, our nutrition program, Carol Tompkins. We all do assessments of our school. We bring those together, and then we create an action plan. And over the last five years, we've developed that action plan, and it may look different every single year based on the needs of our school. So, over the last five years, some of the areas that we have been able to improve were things like updating or receiving some professional development for our PE teachers, updating that curriculum of the PE teachers. Our nutrition program has kept up with all of the USDA National Program standards, which is not easy, and they've continued with the Fresh Fruit and Veggies program, which is really important for our students to get an idea and taste of those fruits and vegetables so that when they get older, it's just a part of their life to be eating those and staying healthy. And the nurses have been teaching health lessons in the schools for the last few years. So, our TAP program is an area that has joined in our wellness. They exercise every day at the TAP program. These students are here, and later on, they're going to demonstrate some hands-only CPR, and that is something that has just gotten started. Our DARE program continues to be strong in our school at Washington, and having a counselor in our, in every building has just been a godsend. We appreciate that, and they are so necessary in helping the health and wellness of our Through all of the assessments and the action plans, we have wanted to make our community more aware of the health needs of our students, as well as our staff members, and we've been able to accomplish that, not only make them aware, but also, they can use the information to make themselves healthier through our Facebook page, our Huron Public School Wellness Facebook page, and our 4-5 Center Facebook page. So, we'd encourage all of you to take a look at those, join 'em, or like 'em, it's called, and then go ahead and share 'em with other family members. We can all improve our health and be more aware of what's going on in our schools. Another area that we've been able to improve is what Mrs. Foss started years ago, Jammin' Minute, takes place every morning at Washington School, and that gets the day started off with exercise so that the students can settle down and be more focused. And we also encourage brain breaks. We encourage the teachers to create brain breaks during their school day so that the students can get up and move and then be ready and focused in the classroom, because that is a proven way to increase learning. And again, this, pictures that I showed here, the kids are all remembering the day. I can see that. The counselor led us in Taking a Stand Against Bullying and to Unite for Kindness. So, I just wanted to show that wellness and health is not all about nutrition and exercise. It is about a lot of different aspects in the school, and I appreciate Mrs. Foss for supporting all of those areas. This is one way to teach empathy, and our counselor does a great job of that at Washington School. And by teaching empathy, it's going to knock out that bullying. So, over the years, we have received several awards. The first award is the National Healthy Schools Award, and we had received a trip to Washington, DC in December of 2015, I believe it was. We have received the Let's Move Active Schools Award, and that's part of First Lady Michelle Obama's initiative to make our schools and students healthier. We've received the Fuel Up to Play 60 Touchdown School Award for several years now, and what that does is it helps students get other students involved in being well, and it teaches leadership skills. That's what Fuel Up to Play 60 is about. You may have seen it on NFL. NFL and Midwest Dairy are the big sponsors of Fuel Up to Play 60. And then, we have also, thanks to Carol Tompkins and the nutrition program, we have received the Healthier U.S. Schools Challenge Smarter Lunchroom Award, and that award should be coming to us in a monetary value pretty soon. We've just been waiting a while. Some of the assessments, in order to improve your school, obviously, they change the qualifications. We, Washington School right now is a bronze level school. There are silver level schools and gold level schools. In order to reach each of those levels on a national scale, we have to improve every year. That means things like meeting USDA guidelines. We might be meeting them at the lowest level, at a bronze level, but we can strive to meet them at a higher level. And their guidelines change every year. Soon, they will, they are asking us to only allow non-food items into, into the schools as birthday treats and such. Well, if that is one of our action items, then that's what we would be doing, but it's all based on our wellness team and the guidelines they set for us, and then we find a happy medium in there. But that's just one example of how we find an action item that we could improve our schools, or how we could improve our schools. And an area that the nurses want to continue working on are those health lessons, and in just encouraging the students to be, take an active part in their health and be advocates for themselves. So, once again, I want to remind you, we do have a wellness page, and so, if there are events coming up that we want to spread the news about, we'll put it on here. If there is a good article that we find, any of the nurses in our district will put it on to this website so that you're able to access it. So, back to health teaching. I'm excited about all the lessons that I get to teach, but this one, I'm extra excited about. It is a way for us to move up. It's one area that is assessed in our healthier generations is, do you teach CPR, and how many grades in your district teach CPR, that type of thing. And we came across an organization who, a woman lost her child to sudden cardiac arrest. He was a student. She lives in Sioux Falls, and her goal is for everybody to be able to perform CPR if needed after she lost her son. And to be able to start the students out at a young age with hands-only CPR, and learning that doing something is better than nothing, warms my heart and makes me feel like they will be able to react, and sometimes even they will be able to react better than adults in a nervous situation. Or in a situation where sometimes adults freeze, students just get it done, and I love that. And so, even if one life is saved by learning this, I think it's worth it. So, I'm just going to show you how we teach it in the classroom. It's such a short video. This is, this is Mrs. Zell's classroom, and it was the very first classroom that I'd ever taught. It was just a couple of weeks ago. So, some of these students are in the video, but then they're going to demonstrate it again. And I think they did exceptional. It's a really good program. It doesn't put any pressure on the students, and they don't become certified, they simply learn it. So, here we go. It's a watch video and then demonstrate.
Now, I have a chance to start. I don't know if you can hear. Nice.
So, the clicking sound you're hearing is when the chest compresses two inches, which would be for an adult, then it makes a click sound. Our fourth graders are not all big enough to make that click sound yet. With good technique and maybe another year or two, they'll all be able to do it. Right now, they're doing as much as they can. So, you guys ready to demonstrate?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I'll just count you down. You're going to walk in, you're going to find somebody. What will you do first? Tap 'em, right? And then, you're going to?
Say.
Say. Call 911.
Yeah.
Or call it yourself.
Yes, so, they learn what to do if there isn't somebody around to call 911. All right, here we go. Three, two, one.
Call 911.
Call 911 now.
Press hard and press fast, right? All right, how long do you guys keep pressing? How long do you keep pressing?
Until someone comes.
Until somebody comes.
Very good.
Or until they start to respond.
Very good. Okay, the students, I asked them what they learned at school, so I'll do the same thing here, and we'll wrap it up with that. I'll start over here. You look a little nervous, right? I'm nervous, too. It's okay. All right. Names. All right, so, state your name, and then tell me what you learned.
My name is Tanner, and I learned not to press on the stomach, to press on the sternum.
Very good. Tanner.
My name is Jonathan Peterson, and I learned to press hard at least two inches down in the center of the chest.
Awesome.
My name is Aurora Dre, and I learned to press two inches down, and if you can't, something's better than doing nothing.
Yes, something is always better than doing nothing. Aurora.
My name is Hannah Schoenfelder, and I learned that doing something is better than doing nothing.
Very good. It's true.
My name is Jaslyn Horn, and I learned when you do CPR, you are the heart's pump.
Excellent. She's the heart's pump when she is doing CPR, and that is true. We learned about the hands-only CPR because people became a little bit afraid to do blowing into the mouth, and as they just said, something is better than nothing, and before a person collapses, the last thing they do is take a breath. That blood has oxygen in it, and as the other person said, they are the pump of the heart. The heart will still circulate that oxygenated blood even if you're not breathing in the mouth. Now, all medical field people, we still breathe in the mouth, and we encourage you to use the mask, if you have a mask there, to breathe in the mouth, but the American Heart Association has developed the hands-only CPR so that we can all do something. All right.
I would just like to say again, thank you, Ms. Basler, for what you do at Washington. She decided that she wanted to really teach some health lessons. She does it once a week for about 40 minutes. She brings all 180 fourth graders into the commons area. The kids do a wonderful job. She talks about situations that might occur. It could be just washing your hands and the germs, not sharing coats, anything that's particular to that grade level, she will talk about. When she asked me to, with the hands-only, and she was blowing those things up in the nurse's office, I had to chuckle because it was funny watching her do that. However, you don't realize the importance of these dolls to the life-saving of an individual, and she started in Mrs. Zell's class. She's almost finished with all of the fourth grade classes, teaching them hands-only She's almost finished with all of the fourth grade classes, teaching them hands-only CPR. When I was in there that day watching, you could tell the kids were getting frustrated because they couldn't make it, make the noise. And I tried, I tried and tried and tried and you know, I couldn't make the noise either. And Baba, I think, was the first one. He had the rhythm and you had to listen to some music in it. You know, I think one of the times it was like staying live with, who sings that?
Bee Gees.
The Bee Gees.
The Bee Gees. And the music, so you can keep going and keep going. And again, thank you, fourth graders, for coming in. I really appreciate it, moms and dads. And again, thank you, Ms. Basler, for doing an awesome job over at Washington. We really truly appreciate everything you do. So, thank you. And thank you, Board, for the Good News Report, for letting us talk the Good News Report. Do you have any questions?
Just one comment. I sure heard a lot of clicking when they were pumping away. I heard a lot of it.
I'm very proud of the fourth graders and how they're doing. And the fifth graders are going to learn it and I believe that the middle school received their mannequins as well and I know high school did, so it's catching on. And we received that at the, the information at our South Dakota School Nurses Association Conference this summer. So it was awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to the next item on our agenda. That is the Business Manager's Report.
Okay, good evening. The only thing I have tonight is a report on the General Fund. We have completed five months, so that's about forty-two percent of the fiscal year. We've collected five million nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars of revenue. That's thirty-three percent of what we have budgeted. At this time last year, we had collected five million one hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, which was also thirty-three percent. So far this year, we've expended five million seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars, or thirty-one percent of the budget. Last year, we had expended six million five hundred and fifty-eight, or forty percent of the budget. Keep in mind, we're doing the salaries for the teachers different this year and the budget percentages aren't going to match up this one year. But what I can tell you is this month compared to last month, we've spent eight percent more, which is right on track with what we should be doing.
Any questions for our Business Manager? Seeing none, we'll now move to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. First thing I'll visit about is the Calendar Committee. We're working on the initial meeting, as you already announced this evening, being a corresponding date to last year's, which is the first Monday when we come back on, after the break, on Monday, January 2nd. The principals are submitting who their student and faculty representatives are and parent representatives from each area. And there's the administrators, including the district and building administrators that serve on it. Board Member Snow represents the high school students and I believe there's a delegate for the middle school students that is on that. I would just share that we learned something in the last couple of years. I believe last year was the first year we made it formal and that we will begin that session. So it's important to restate what your Chairman said, we'll begin that session with public testimony. So anyone, whether they're on the committee or not, that has testimony concerning the calendar, the entire committee will listen to that testimony as the beginning of their meeting. As in the past, I've done a rough draft of the calendar and I can share with you simply a, a district administrator's philosophy and led by me, but, but as I've visited with the district, we really believe we need to do one of two things. Remain with an after Labor Day calendar or we'll be talking about the third, the third Monday or even back to the second Thursday of the month as far as beginning. And the reason why it needs to be one or the other is that right now with the after Labor Day calendar, we don't get to the semester break until about the eighteenth to twentieth of January. That's time for students to get back in the swing of things, get the, talk about it at the high school level, because that's where it affects it, and, and then be prepared for semester tests. In that model, as Chairman Wheeler read, the, the alternative program to try to catch up with the gift program, Get It Finished Today, it takes place on a Saturday because there is no break for, for that to happen. The number that are involved in that is not as high as it was when it was a holiday break, but we still try to put that in place. If we're going to move it up at all, then it needs to go up far enough so that the semester can end before Christmas. It is not, I, I caution and I have the administrative support that to move it up a week and, and mess around with the state fair and mess around with then having students only have a few days to come back for the semester just is not good. So, that's the discussion. If Board members have anything when I'm done here that they would like to publicly state so that it's considered, fine, but I'd just like to keep everyone involved in, in what we're doing. There's been some questions about should we start considering a two-year calendar so we don't have to meet every year? The problem with that is that that's great as long as conditions don't change. If conditions change because of some legislation or whatever, then you're with a calendar that it's hard to live with. And so, I'm comfortable, if you're comfortable, with continuing to make it an annual event and begin with the testimony as the first part of that. That's what I had to share about the Calendar Committee. I wanted to briefly visit about graduation coaches because I've had some really good questions from you, which then is a representation of the public wondering about the graduation coaches. This is a part of the fact that our K-8 schools are in the FOCUS program and the FOCUS program gives extra funding through grants. And so one of the areas or deficiencies that's been identified are students who do not envision and have habits, study habits or, or environment habits of doing things which we know will lead to being a dropout. And so these folks are intervention people who work individually with the student in order to try to create the nurturing and the environment that gives them the best chance long-range to graduate. One of the things we know is that dropouts do not necessarily happen as sophomores or juniors in high school. Sometimes dropouts happen by what happens in second, third grade. Sometimes it's by what happens in fifth and sixth grade. Each of these people, as they accepted the position, because I was there and witnessed this personally, are eyes wide open that if we would be so fortunate as to move out of FOCUS program because of scores going up, et cetera, the grant goes away and the job goes away. That it's directly tied to it, there is no replacement funding that, that we would intend. And so, it will be exciting to see if they can identify components or habits that by intervening with them, we can give kids a better chance to graduate and then become contributors in our society. I want to visit a little bit about the legislative update in that I appreciated you coming in on what was an open session meeting with the three legislators. No meal or anything was served, so there was no violation as they tried to figure out the impact of initiated Measure 22. But I value the interaction that takes place between the representatives of the community to the legislature and the representatives of the community, the school board, to be as much as we can on the same wavelength when we get to the legislature. I'm going to comment on a couple of other things and then this will segue into Board Member Garrett's report on the board portion of legislative update. I, I do want you to be aware, just because I think it's healthy to know, that the next step, all of the superintendents met last week in, on Wednesday in Chamberlain and went through what are the commonalities that irregardless of enrollment or location, we can all work together on. We did that. And now the large school group, which is twenty superintendents, that represents over sixty percent of the student body, in, in South Dakota's student body, have our annual meeting with the Governor on Thursday morning. And from the pre-meetings, I can tell you a great deal of that will be on showing appreciation and being there to support what's been a very, very bold initiative in order to create a situation where our teachers specifically and our employees in general are, have competitive wages and can, and can set out to spend their career working in South Dakota schools. The Governor's laid out in his, in his goal, one percent, and we hope the state funding can be there to do that. There will be a couple of things that our legislators are aware of because we shared that last week and, and we will be visiting with the Governor, which are long-range awareness issues about what happens to schools when they go through a year of declining enrollment and are there safeguards in order to make sure that the funding stays stable. We're in a growth period, but there's not a school in the state. Last year was Rapid City on the large end that doesn't go through hills and valleys of enrollment. And so we would rather plan way ahead of that rather than get in a situation where we would have a year of, of short funding. And so we'll be discussing that and also the long-range plans for keeping infrastructure solid. The state has worked in the last four years on an ongoing funding mechanism for infrastructure for the state buildings. And so we want to start talking about some type of model that parallels that so that the investment that our communities made in the renovation of schools, in the new middle school and now in the new elementary schools, that we have a long-range funding mechanism so that there is money there to support and we do not go backwards on the condition of our buildings. Neither of those things need to be passed this year, but there are things that we should talk long-range for the betterment of the people's investment in buildings and infrastructure. And then the final thing before I go back is that the entire employee group and the, and the school board has been well-aware of a, of a journey that's the better part of a year that Diana and I have been on with two very, very important people in our life. Weston, our grandson that was born fourteen and a half weeks early, and Wayne, dear gentleman in town who's been a friend of ours for twenty-three years from the church. And, and two very significant things happened in the last week. Mr. Testerman was called home to the Lord and we celebrated his life today. And, and our grandson Weston got out of the hospital after a hundred and thirty days. And I just want you to know that the staff, faculty, the board has been unbelievably supportive as we've gone, gone through those things and that's a huge reason why Diana and I have spent the vast majority of our career in the, in the Harens School District and I'm very, very grateful.
Mr. Chairman? Thank you. Any questions for the Superintendent?
No other question. I would just make a comment on the Calendar Committee. I, I think it's good that you're getting public input at the first meeting. I think that's a good option for anybody in the public to show up and, and state their views on it. I, I think it's good to consider all the options. I would just say that, and I know we've been starting after Labor Day now for the past three years. I haven't received any public input from parents that are not part of the school system anyway, that, that are not in favor of it or that have kids in school, I guess, any non-school employee anyway that's not, that's against starting after Labor Day. So, that's the input I've received, just...
Sure.
And no input, a lot of times is, is we take some stock in that too.
Sure.
Certainly if things aren't going well, you usually hear from people.
We try to go into it eyes wide open, that the general community that is not connected to issues with their students, the general community and most of the parents because of it are supportive of after Labor Day and we're very, very sensitive to that. There will be parents at this meeting who have that aha moment when their students are in high school and suddenly, if you're involved in an activity, we have hundreds of kids that are here because of marching band and, and football and golf and tennis and cross-country and soccer, who have the feeling that as long as all those things are going on, let's have school. And so that's kind of the age difference between the opinions of the, of the two groups and that's why we have to really be sensitive and allow the committee to, to go through that.
Sure.
But your comments about the, the general community, if I get feedback from the community and they're not associated with students, they are pro-Labor Day. And then the students, it really depends on the age of the student and, and how it affects the, the, their life and et cetera. And then one final thing, which is a academic concern which did not used to be, and that is the huge growth in dual-credit courses. And right now, and Jasmine, you might be able to comment on this, but right now, those kids in the dual-credit courses have to come in and set up and start school long before everyone else or they can't take those courses because the, the majority of students are, are starting earlier. So when they start on the college campuses, then they affect us. Have I said that correctly? Because I don't live that every day, Jasmine.
Um, I am a sophomore, so I don't take any dual-credit. I can't, as far as I know. But I am friends with a good amount of juniors and seniors and what I have noticed is that it does increase, I believe, already accountable students who do take those courses. It does increase their accountability. It does kind of jumpstart their year, junior year is obviously one of the busiest years in high school and it really does ease them into it, I've heard. And I think it, yeah, it's, it's a big start, but it's good that we get it within that time. Like, I'm friends with a lot of band kids who do start marching band early in the season. A lot of speech and debate kids do start coming in, finding pieces early, so we're there already and so why as well throw some education into being at the high school. Another thing that I had to say, when you brought up semester testing, what I've noticed after Labor Day, as long as I've been at the high school and taking standard, or not standardized test, semester tests. It does help to have it after, with the schedule that we have now after Christmas break. As you know, we have a review day for our AB. We have an AB, a review day, a B review day. And that really does help us. We have required packets that were given to review for the tests and that obviously helps. If anything, the week-long Christmas break gives us time to retain the knowledge that we've learned. Really, and I'm on the Calendar Committee, so I will, I might be bringing this up, but having that break, the only issue I think that I've seen is the teachers and the students sometimes feel like we get our NWEA testing kind of soon, as soon as we start the school year, and then just individual tests and scheduling around that Christmas break and then kind of figuring in, well, we don't want to overwhelm you with tests the first week that you get back with your semesters, your finals, your finishing up chapters. So, I think that it's working so far.
Thank you. That's wonderful. Mr. Chairman, one calendar note that I did forget, just for you folks, is that the, the central administration each year hosts an open house for all of the employees and that takes place this Wednesday from two to five so that people can work their schedule a little early if they work the night shift a little late. And Board members are always welcome to come in and be able to say, and say hi and visit a few of the, of your staff members. And so I, I forgot to mention that. Didn't want to take away from the Calendar Committee, but I saw that I missed that note. Perwin and Jasmine, thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Any other questions for the Superintendent on his report? Seeing none, then we'll move to a report from Mr. Bishop on the Delegate, the ASBSD Delegate Assembly.
Yeah, well, last week on Wednesday, December 7th, that was the snow day for the Delegate Assembly from November 18th. I'm not sure the weather was any better, but they still had it. I guess one of the first things we did, we got into it, there was a bylaw change proposed that actually passed. That addressed the way that delegates are appointed to the Delegate Assembly. In the past, you had to sign off and certify that so-and-so was elected to Delegate Assembly. They're going to use an email format now to kind of streamline that whole process. The day of Delegate Assembly, there's always a whole pile of delegates there who didn't get the thing in on time and we have to approve them, which is just a process that you have to do. But they're trying to streamline that a little better and so they're going to an email format next year on, on certifying your delegates. So, that was one change that we had. Standing positions, they split them into continuing positions and then ones that were, that were edited. The continuing positions all passed in one motion. We addressed each, each of the standing positions individually that had, that had changes and had action and they all passed. They were pretty, pretty straightforward. Going into resolutions, again, the, the continuing resolutions, the ones that had not changed, they were all, they were all passed in one motion. We did try to remove the, the graduation age, the eighteen-year. We had a motion to, to pull that one off and discuss it and debate it and that failed, so it stayed in the continuing and those passed in one motion. And, uh, those passed in one motion.
Did you make the motion?
Brandon Valley got up and I, and I followed and we tried to, we tried to get it removed and discussed and they, they weren't gonna have it, so we'll try it another year.
You had a little help this year.
That's right, that's right. We know that there's a movement out there, at least now, so we'll work on that one. The resolutions that we had, Sioux Falls had actually proposed a few different amendments to the, to the changes that we had. One was on the, uh, achievement and equa, equity one. Um, they basically just wanted to change the verbiage on that to say that we would follow what the state employees are doing, which over the past ten years was a four-point-two percent increase. Um, they didn't put it into the resolution, but they put it in the rationale so that they could possibly go out and try to get more than the one percent that the governor had proposed. We talked that that probably wouldn't happen, but it nice to be able to say that, hey, look what the state employees are doing and let's try to get the schools somewhere close to what the state employees are doing. They had an, Sioux Falls put another one in on the last year's Senate Bill One Fifty-Nine, uh, which is now South Dakota codified law thirteen dash sixty-five. Um, you know, they were gonna try to pick that one apart. That's the insurance company, um, tax, tax credits and whatnot, so, um, they're gonna try to, they wanted to push to get more open, open, uh, uh, open, open laws on that stuff so they could see what they were doing with the funds and, um, that passed. They were gonna try to, they were gonna try to push on that one a little bit and try to see what they could do on that one. The big one was the Funding Formula, which would be C1. Um, I guess we noticed they removed a lot of the resolutions that were in there and kind of combined them all into one. Um, Sioux Falls did again pass a, an amendment to that one. They put in, um, that they would allow school districts whose maximum per-student capital outlay levy is under the state's average to maintain or increase their capital outlay up to the three dollars per thousand mill levy at the discretion of the, of the school board. So, uh, they'd kind of had the same discussion that we've been having and, um, we had a pretty good discussion on that point, um, and that passed. So that was gonna be a part of, of what they would try to push for, for this school year or for this, uh, legislative session. Another one of the school funding ones that we, that we had changed was the two-year enrollment averaging. Um, they, they actually put an amendment in that they would have it say, or current, whichever is higher, so it wouldn't be just a two-year average. We kind of went, oh, wait, that's a terrible idea. If you're going up, then you would average up. If you're going down, you're gonna average down, so it was...
Right. And, and the old, the old was just a safeguard on the way down.
Right, right. So, but the way it was written, we caught that one there, so we were, we made a little minor change to that verbiage. And I guess the other one that was, that was discussed was, um, the use of bathrooms. Uh, they had rewritten the, the verbiage that we had seen previously to take out that we would need to have a policy written. So that portion of it was taken out and everybody agreed that, that, uh, that it should pass. So it was a good day, a lot of good discussions and, um, I guess they'll be pushing forward for legislative, legislative session with those, with those resolutions, so...
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you for your report. We'll now move to our one item of old business, a second reading on the TAP Handbook revisions. This has been up for introduction, first reading and now second reading. I'm gonna guess there've been no changes to the handbook since last time? I'm seeing no. So, any discussion, questions or action?
Move for adoption of the TAP Handbook revisions.
Second. A motion, a second to adopt the revisions to the TAP Handbook. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, so to vote, all in favor say aye. Aye. And opposed say no. Motion carries. Uh, that is our only item of business, there's no new business, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. Second. Motion, a second to adjourn, all in favor say aye. Aye. And opposed say no. Motion carries. We are adjourned.